We're back in our study session from closed session. Can we vote to get out of closed?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
Motion to close our study session.
Support.
We have a motion on the table to close study session from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Sabal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Hold on, I still want to say aye.
Seven forty-two.
Seven forty-two.
I want to say aye.
Move to adjourn study session.
Okay, we are moving into our regularly scheduled board meeting.
Adjourn your study session.
We're closed out of our study session. We're, we already voted, we're done. Okay, so let's vote to get out of the study session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're moving into the regular board meeting. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's Crestwood Board of Education Board Meeting. I call this meeting to order at seven forty-three. Ms. Janoon, please take role.
Mrs. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Baydun.
Here.
Ms. Elzayat.
Here.
Ms. Swaz.
Here.
Ms. Self, Ms. Kaminsky.
Here.
Mr. Sabal.
Here.
Madam Chair, before.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, please, all right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I just wanted, on behalf of the Board, we just wanted to send our condolences and our regrets to the Oxford community and the Oxford District. So if we could please take a moment of silence on behalf of the victims and the community of Oxford. Okay, thank you, everyone. Ms. Janoon, if you could please read the consent agenda.
Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the December 6th, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, November 22nd, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, November 22nd, 2021, the minutes from the special meeting, Monday, November 29th, 2021, and the check registry dated November 1st through November 30th, 2021.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Janoon, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Board of Education approval is recommended for the items listed on the consent agenda, which include the December 6th, 2021 Board Agenda, the minutes from the study session on Monday, November 22nd, 2021, the minutes from the regular meeting on Monday, November 22nd, 2021, the minutes from the special meeting, Monday, November 29th, 2021, and a check registry dated November 1st through November 30th, 2021. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. Approval of requisitions. The attached list of requisitions are items that buildings or departments would like to purchase for upcoming needs. The requisitions have gone through all the appropriate approval processes and have been approved by administration for purchase. In addition, there are funds available to make these purchases. Once requisitions are approved, they will be processed and purchase orders will be sent out.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 4A1.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the requisitions per attachment 4A1. All those in favor, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Number two, approval of confirming purchase orders. The attached confirming purchase order was items that needed to be processed prior to the Board approval. The purchase was done in order to buy parts for the vehicles.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzayat.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 4A2.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Elzayat, supported by Mr. Sabal, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the confirming purchase orders per attachment 4A2. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Number three, approval of Athletico contract. Crestwood Athletics would like to enter into a contract with Athletico Physical Therapy to provide a trainer for the district's athletic competitions. The company would provide one certified athletic trainer for thirty hours per week for the winter and spring seasons. The trainer will work with our teams to evaluate injuries, work with athletes to prevent injuries, and assist with concussion protocol and other screenings. The contract would run through June 30th, 2022.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Kaminsky.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Athletico Physical Therapy contract through June 30th, 2022. See attachment 4A3.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Kaminsky, supported by Ms. Janoon, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the Athletico Physical Therapy contract through June 30th, 2022. See attachment 4A3. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Sabal.
Just want to make sure that some of the items that we discussed when this came out were covered.
Yes.
As it pertains to Athletico and as it pertains to Beaumont's contract. And what have we done with that?
Yes, those have all been taken care of. And the Beaumont contract, there was a letter that we were sending to Beaumont indicating that we would not be using their services for the rest of this year. However, we intend to look at their evaluation for next year so that they could secure a trainer for us come September, prior to the school year.
So does that letter pause the contract? And do we have something saying that it pauses it? Or was the original contract stated as such?
The, the letter actually terminates the contract for this year. And because in our contract, there's a thirty-day clause. It does terminate it.
Okay, so it's been terminated because of the thirty-day clause.
Yes.
November 30th was the last date that the trainer, the Beaumont trainer, was supposed to be on staff.
No, the Athletico trainer, we were doing hour by hour on November 30th, or as needed.
What was the last date of the Beaumont trainer?
October 31st, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct, so then there was a thirty-day clause. So through November 30th is what you were saying, right?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. I misunderstood what you were saying.
Okay, perfect, that was my question, thank you.
Madam President, if I may add, in the attachment, I just want to add that everybody's aware too, in the attachment says services as requested by AD for Athletico. So it would only be when we require services for Athletico, just so it would make everybody aware that we're not in a, we're not stuck in a.
That was for the month of November.
No, this is, Athletico current service is through 11/30/21. It says services as requested by AD. So that's going to continue as well. Those numbers are just to give us an estimate on how much it'll be if we, if we use them on a regular basis.
So now I'm confused.
Sorry, I may have confused you, my apologies, Penny.
So I'm gathering, based on what you put here, that services as requested by AD of forty dollars an hour were through 11/30/21.
Correct, that was what that was.
So the new contract.
Correct.
Is twenty-five dollars an hour.
Yes.
Yes. Sorry, I was wrong on the. It's still services requested. My point is it's still services as requested.
But now there's a contract, so it's a better rate because it's a contract.
Yes.
Okay, so you threw me off, I'm like, what?
See, this is why Penny tells me don't talk when it comes to business. But yes, I'm sorry, I just wanted to be clear that it is still services as requested.
What were we paying Beaumont?
We were, I don't remember the hourly rate. Last year for the nineteen-twenty school year.
Can you send us that in the email if you would, please?
Yes, I can. I don't remember.
Because honestly, if it's a comparable rate, you know, why not?
You said it's twenty-five an hour?
That's what it says here.
I think the quality.
But that's not, is this the right contract for a?
So it says breakdown of twenty-five dollars an hour, based on nine hundred and thirty hours.
Okay.
Where did we come up with nine thirty, if you'll let me ask you? Is that just the forty-hour week?
It's for the thirty-one weeks.
At a forty-hour week.
Yeah, at a thirty-hour week.
Thirty-hour week, correct, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll buy you chocolate, Penny, sorry.
It's all good. Thank you all very much. That concludes my report for tonight.
Okay, Dr. Lassar.
Good evening. Our first action item today is the appointment of a relief aide for GSRP, Ms. Sarah Hajazi. Ms. Hajazi is a compassionate person who is always willing to help others. She's fluent in English and Arabic. And Ms. Hajazi was also a math and physics teacher in Lebanon.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabal.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Sarah Hajazi as a relief aide for the 2021-2022 school year. According to the contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A1. Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Sabal, supported by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Sarah Hajazi as a relief aide for the 21-22 school year. According to the contract, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A1. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our second action item this evening is for an EL resource teacher at Hillcrest Elementary, Ms. Debe Mosham. Ms. Mosham earned her Bachelor of Arts from the University of Michigan and her Master's of Educational Leadership from Concordia University. She has also completed her ESL endorsement requirements. She has twelve years of experience as an educator where she has incorporated hands-on and minds-on activities as well as technology to support student learning and success. She has taught grades K through four, giving her a broad understanding of student needs at the various levels of the students she will be working with.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Janoon.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Debe Mosham as an EL resource teacher for the 21-22 school year. According to the CFT contract, MA, step nine, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A2.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Janoon, supported by Ms. Elzayat, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Debe Mosham as an EL resource teacher for the 21-22 school year. According to the CFT contract, MA, step nine, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A2. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our third action item is the appointment of the middle school transition liaison, Ms. Samira Dekhla. Ms. Dekhla earned her Associate Degree from Henry Ford College. She has six years of school experience working with and advising students who are at risk. She is trained in restorative practices and is skilled in coordinating between stakeholders in order to arrange conferences, build and maintain relationships, and put student support in place.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Elzayat.
Recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Samira Dekhla as a middle school transition liaison for the 2021-2022 school year. According to the facilitator technician liaison contract, class two, step three, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A3.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Ms. Elzayat, supported by Mr. Baydun, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Samira Dekhla as a middle school transition liaison for the 21-22 school year. According to the facilitator technician liaison contract, class two, step three, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A3. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Baydun.
Is this the first transition liaison we're hiring? And what exactly are their roles, I guess, or responsibility?
So the trans, yes, these, these were some of the support positions that were approved by the Board in order to assist our students and continue to grow and expand social, emotional, and academic learning supports for students. This specific, the middle school transition liaison with the upcoming high school transition liaison are going to work together to ensure that as our students come into middle school and go out of middle school, going into the high school, helping with those transitions. And then the high school transition liaison, of course, working with the ninth grade lead teacher position that is in place there to ensure that our students have a smooth and successful transition as they move from one level or one building to the other throughout the district.
So like academic, extra academic support? Or like maybe referred by counselor that this person has, you know, or needs additional support, I guess?
It's another layer, it's another layer in the social, emotional support process. So it's addition, it's additional hands on deck to help students that are struggling with transition.
Okay.
I would like to comment that I know she comes with a wealth of knowledge and I know that her and her dad, they worked with Mr. Caseball, so I know that this is going to be a good combination here. And on top of that, I'm hoping that we can finally get Khalil Dekhla to start volunteering like he had promised. So now he doesn't have an excuse because he's got his daughter and his daughter-in-law. So Khalil, if you're out there listening, we, we want you to come and join the team with your volunteering.
He's enjoying retirement, is all I can say.
No, I don't know about that. We're, that's a discussion we have to have. But anyway, any further discussion with that?
Yes, I, I, I will not be able to vote on this due to, I didn't even know this person was applying due to familial ties.
Okay.
So I need to extract myself from this.
All right, with all, with that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and welcome to Ms. Dekhla.
Our last action item for this evening is the appointment of the high school transition liaison, Ms. Yasmin Nasser. Ms. Nasser earned her Bachelor of Psychology from the University of Michigan Dearborn. She has worked in liaison roles for nine years. She has worked to support PBIS and restorative practice initiatives at a school-wide level. Ms. Nasser was also selected for and completed the Child Life Practicum Program at the Children's Hospital in Detroit.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sabal.
I recommend that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Yasmin Nasser as a high school transition liaison for the 2021-2022 school year. According to facilitator technician liaison contract, class one, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A4.
Support.
We have a motion on the floor from Mr. Sabal, supported by Ms. Elzayat, that the Crestwood Board of Education approve the hiring of Yasmin Nasser as a high school transition liaison for the 21-22 school year. According to the facilitator technician liaison contract, class one, step one, effective pending acceptable criminal background check and other employment documentation as required by law. See attachment 5A4. Is there any discussion? Again, I'm going to say Khalil better be here. So I'm hoping that you make that call to him and say.
I will, I will.
I'm requesting him to be part of the, the transition team.
You got it.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Dr. Lassar, if I may add, I want to add and let the community know as well as the Board, these two positions are also being paid for out of grant funding. So they're not, they're not hitting our general fund. It's coming out of grant funding that we can use for social, emotional supports. And as you know, that has been one of our major pushes for our district.
Yes, thank you. Okay.
We have a few informational items.
Yes, sure.
So the first is resignation for Jack Mitchell, food service driver, resigned effective November 29th. And the retirement of Ms. Denise Green, a special education resource teacher at Riverside Middle School. She's retiring effective December 31st of this year. And we want to thank her for her twenty-five years of dedication to the Crestwood School District and our students.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations to Ms. Green. Any relation?
No.
Okay, moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Education, Community. First off, no action items, so that's good. Second thing, informational items, just have a couple messages. Prior in our study session, we discussed it, and I just wanted to discuss it again real quick. First, again, thank you, Madam President, for the moment of silence for the community of Oxford. You know, any, any tragedy, no matter where it is, no matter what part of the country, state, county, doesn't matter, it affects all of us. I have sent out communication to the community, just letting the community know what we've been doing and how we've been doing things. Today's study session, I believe, was very informative, and it shows that we have things in place. And since August, we've been, you know, making them better. It's consistent, it's evolving, as mentioned. But I also want to mention that we have to be in this together as partnership. These are difficult times, as always. We have a lot of things hitting us at once. We've been dealing with COVID for two years. You know, we have, you know, needs of our students and our community, and then we had this tragic event. I'd like the community to know that I, as well as my cabinet and the team and all administrators and teachers and the Board of Education, these decisions that we make are not decisions we make at whim, nor are they decisions that we make because they're easy for us to make. I would like to let everyone know that we are in this together. We will continue to be in this together. A community that stands together will raise children. A community that stands separated, children will also separate. We also need parents' help to keep an eye on social media. We have to do this together. It is okay for parents to grab their child's phone and go through it. It is okay for a parent to check a child's backpack. It is okay for a parent to call the school and say, I need help. It is okay for a child to look at an adult, no matter who that adult is, and ask for help. It is okay to not be perfect. And we have to do this together. I am not a superintendent of schools because I want to be a superintendent. I am the superintendent of schools because this community is near and dear to me, as it is to all. And we need to be in this together. If we don't do this together, we will fail together. So therefore, I'm asking parents, please, we have open lines of communication. If you need help, if you're struggling, if you see something as a parent, do not hesitate to call and ask for help. Too often, our parents don't ask us for help because they feel that someone's going to look at them as they're not a good parent. That is not the truth. A good parent is always the parent that is willing to ask for help, no matter what that help may be. No one will judge you, no one will ridicule you, and no one will even know what the conversation consisted of. This is what will help communities get through these difficult times, and this is what will help communities to enable one another to not have tragedies. So with that said, I want to thank the Crestwood High School team, the Riverside Middle School team, for the work they've done these last two weeks. Yes, we were virtual last week, but we were still dealing with situations. Today, people got together and did what was supposed to be done, and we will continue to do that. Moving forward, we will continue to evolve and evaluate and grow. I know the Board of Education will continue to support us, and I know our community will support us. I don't want to mention a name, but a community member honestly made my day today. I don't want to mention his name. If he's watching, he knows who he is. He sent me a voice text, and I walked out of the lunchroom to listen to it. And he said to me, Dr. Masalim, thank you for all you're doing. We know these times are difficult, but the community is here to support you. Tell us whatever you need. That makes a day like today go a little smoother. You know who you are, thank you. So as we move forward, we have winter break coming. It's a couple weeks away, it seems like it's, you know, it seems like yesterday was August. I want to wish everyone a safe and happy, you know, holiday season, a happy and joyful new year. Hopefully, the 2022 is a year of reflection, growth, and positive change for all of us. And finally, I want to thank everyone who has really stepped up during these difficult times in our community. You know, I had another gentleman who called me today, and you know who you are. One voice message, one phone call, a text message. I got a lot of calls today from people in the community who, you know, are like, whatever you need, whatever you need. That's why I'm proud to be a Crestwood Charger. So thank you, Board. Thank you to my cabinet, to my team, for everyone who has stepped up. And thank you for your trust and patience in me. So with that said, Madam President, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments.
Okay, so, John first or?
Those don't matter.
So I'll first call Mr. Ran to the podium, and I'm going to just read a quick statement. But you can go up to the podium, I'm just going to read a quick statement. So this meeting of the Board is held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time, there is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. This is not the time for debate or argument. Do not mention any student or staff names. In order to permit a fair allotment of time to participants, speakers will be limited to three minutes. The president may extend this time to five minutes per person when needed, up to a half hour, is provided for public input. Direct all questions to the Board President.
Okay, Mr. Ran, I'm sorry, Renzi, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. One of the things the, the Board of Education talked about was traffic congestion at the corner of Ford Road and Beach, right after high school lets out. And there's a board member, his name's Ray Muscat, and he would be, I think, an ideal person to talk to because he has a real interest in doing something about the congestion. Back in August, my neighbor asked me if I could take his daughter, pick, pick his daughter up at school, after school. And so I was there for the first two weeks of September, and I quit because it was, it was a madhouse over in Greenland. All the cars are parked in there. I don't know how these mothers do it, but they didn't have any accidents. And I counted forty cars in a row just from the parking lot north of the high school to Ford Road. So there's a lot of things that can be done, but nothing has been done. And he is really, really frustrated. But if he heard from somebody like you, in combination with other groups, that would be helpful, I think.
Thank you.
Also, also, also you talked about the, the one student that shot the four students at Oxford, and that for sure is really bad. But I thought, from my point of view, I thought what was really interesting, what was on his phone, and for sure he had a phone. So what was on his phone? He had, he sent a text message just shortly before he did the shooting, and his text message said, "The voices won't stop. My life is useless," which is depression, "help me." So it was really, really sad. So, and just before he did that, where was he on his phone? Instagram, you knew it. On November 19th, the lead story in the Wall Street Journal, "States Investigate Instagram Over How It Affects Children," lead story. There's eight, eight to ten states that are combining to have a civil action against Facebook because of this Instagram and Facebook creating anxiety and depression in students. On December 6th, there was an article in the Wall Street Journal, "If you, if you didn't like Instagram one, now there's going to be two of them." So this article says, "If we have a second Instagram, will that make things more worse or better?"
Okay, you have fifteen more seconds, sorry.
And each week, each week, they, in the Wall Street Journal, they, they talk about a book, and this book was all about artificial intelligence with, which is what Instagram, which is what Facebook and Instagram use to create this depression and anxiety among students. And the last sentence says, "Despite the author's glaring optimism, they are captivated by the notion that artificial intelligence is changing human thought." It's really scary, so it's just something to consider.
Thank you so much.
I ran out of time, but I'll go over this article because this article is something that you may want to consider to develop a questionnaire to be sent out to every elementary, middle school, and high school kid in September. Redo it in January, but I'll talk about, I ran out of time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Mr. John Amar.
Good afternoon. My name is John Amar, and I'm the father of a kindergartner at Kinlock Elementary School. From my understanding, both the state and county departments of health and human services did not force this school district to go virtual last week. In 2019, according to the Public School Review, the year prior to the pandemic, 53% of students within this district were not proficient in reading or language arts, and 62% of students were not proficient in mathematics. With these proficiency results, this district shut down in-person learning, but allowed sporting events and practices to take place, which allowed breathing, touching, and sweating on one another regardless of wearing masks. Crestwood School District had 21 different sporting events or practices in person, some of which required traveling to other school districts. I would say these priorities are way off base. On the November 15th school board meeting, members of this board justified going virtually by mingling. I would say in-person sports fall under that classification. I ask going forward, this board immediately implement the policy that anytime virtual learning is implemented without the direction of the state and/or the county, that this automatically triggers the cancellation, rescheduling, and/or forfeit of all in-person extracurricular activities associated with the school district for the duration of the virtual learning. There should be absolutely no sporting events, no practices in person if our kids cannot be in the classroom. I hope we can all agree on this, and if we cannot, I would ask you to publicly state why you cannot agree to put education and safety before athletics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amar.
Madam Chair, may I address?
Sure.
Mr. Amar. Mr. Amar, your concerns are very valid. I can tell you that I also run the weightlifting program at the high school, and I did shut that down last week, so there were no kids in that program. How other things were done, I'm not sure.
The varsity female basketball team played at Plymouth and went to a different school district. They lost that game.
The reason I bring this up and I called you back is I want you to know that I do agree with you. And I'm not saying that for any other reason besides the fact, this is my own personal opinion. And I have the right to state that I was alarmed last week to find out there was wrestling practice.
Yes.
Okay, so we canceled the weight room because of that. And I stated last meeting that one of the biggest concerns I have is the kids are always wearing their mask below their nose, and I've had to remove a couple of kids from the weight room. So I will say to the administration, that is a very valid point. If we can't have the kids in the classroom, we shouldn't have them take part in sporting events. So that should be across the board. And I really was not aware that the sporting events were going on until my son said to me that one of the players had wrestling practice. And I wanted to send you a text to find out what was going on, but I didn't. So I will not disagree with you, and in fact, I will go on the record to agree with you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, is there any more comments? Mr. Baydoun?
Yeah, so, you know, first of all, I want to share my prayers and thoughts to the Oxford community as well. Just took some notes here I want to touch on. You know, when your kids get home, as Dr. Masalim mentioned, talk to your kids. You know, don't assume everything was just fine at school today. Communication is key, and I think sometimes we, you know, we fail to see if something really is going on, underlying conditions or whatnot, or sometimes just someone having a bad day. That's all it takes sometimes. So please, keep an open line of communication with your children. It's very important. Another thing I would like to add is, you know, holiday season's coming. Please, everyone be safe. Wish you happy holidays and also happy new year. Keep in mind that, you know, with everything going on around us, we still would like to enjoy ourselves and enjoy our families and whatever festivities there are throughout the holiday season. So to the faculty and staff and also our student body, please enjoy your break and be safe.
Thank you. Mr. Seba.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will reiterate a lot of what Mr. Baydoun and Superintendent Masalim said earlier. Eyes on social media. But there's something that I think we really need to bring forward, and I need to give this administration a lot of kudos for it. I constantly hear social, emotional, restorative practices. I'm constantly hearing these things from you. And you're constantly coming to us for more support so that these children have the means to vent. I can't speak for that child in Oxford, but I can tell you, I think we all hugged our kids a little tighter last week because of it. And it's horrifying to think of what those families are going through. But I will tell you, you have our full support. I know you have mine when it comes to anything that these kids need from a social, emotional standpoint because they do need the support of the administration. This is their first step in life, as to learn how to deal with things, and it starts here. So I wanted to make sure we did that. I said it earlier, I'll say it again. Emotional thinking restricts rational thinking. We can't let emotion get in the way when we're making decisions, and you did a great job today with rational thinking and how you approached the situation. And the entire administration did a great job. I want to thank all of you for everything that you've done. It's a tough spot to be in. You know, we're all in our daily jobs, and we're getting updates when we can, but you guys are living it. And these families that were at Crestwood High School picking up their kids today, they're scared. And everybody's scared, as are you, by the way. Let's be realistic. You guys are just as scared as the families because the burden's on you, and it's the burden's on us. So thank you guys for that. I do want to wish the entire community, the entire Crestwood School District, happy holidays to the entire board, happy holidays to you and your families. It's been a tough year with a lot of change, and I know 2022, we keep saying, is 2020 over? I don't think it's over yet. I feel like I'm in 2020 still. It's been a long 2020. Hopefully, 2022 will be a new year for all of us, and I wish you all very, very much success and health in 2022.
Ms. Fawaz?
I guess how many more times can we repeat, but still, for Oxford, to my friends in Oxford, our prayers, our thoughts are with you, your family, your kids. I mean, I guess not much more we can actually say about that. Happy holidays to everyone, happy new year. And I think, again, the most critical thing I would just say is watch your kids' social media. Like you said, their posts, what they're putting on there, because, you know, that's, you see how quick it can just send everyone in such a frenzy. Other than that, just be safe. Thank you.
Ms. Janu?
So again, like everybody else, just want to send my sincerest condolences to the Oxford community and those families because I think, as we all know, as parents ourselves, it would be your worst nightmare. And, you know, again, just my sincerest condolences to the family and the community, and we are praying for you all. Happy holidays to everybody as well. I think, as Mo said, you know, you keep waiting for it. Keep saying, can't wait, can't wait to get, you know, through this, can't wait to get, you know, to the new year. But I feel that it's coming. Things are going to get better. And, you know, we can, I know Mr. Amar, you know, I had some conversation with him, you know, regarding his concerns, and we all, I think we all, nobody wanted to see our kids go virtual. I mean, I'll give, we'll put that out there. And hopefully, these kids can get back to some sort of normalcy where, you know, they're not having to worry about that fear of not being able to go to school. And again, I feel like we're getting there, and hopefully, it'll be, we won't have to go through that again. So thank you, and thank you to the administration because I think, as everyone stated, I received so many calls as well and was on edge and very anxious this morning. And you guys were in every building and making sure that our students and staff were safe and not having to care for what happens, God forbid, to yourself. You put yourselves out there and made sure that everybody else felt safe, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kaminsky?
Well, I have to say it again, prayers to the Oxford community, the Clarkston community. I say prayers nightly for all of you and will continue to do so. And it's more than just the 11 families that were struck by bullets. It's everyone in the community, and in fact, it's everyone in the state and everyone in the country. So know that you have support. The other thing is, I want to thank administration. It's been a heck of a week, and I hope we don't have any more like this. But in the event we do, you can see that we have made preparations and, you know, we're as prepared as you can be, I guess, for something like this, and we'll continue to enhance those preparations that are in place. The Crestwood community is tight-knit as Riverside and all our elementary schools. And I want to acknowledge Toni Blackburn, who is a Riverside graduate, and she passed away today of COVID. She was Secretary for the City of Dearborn Heights Water Department, and many of you may recognize her from Kroger's and Westland as a clerk, and she worked there for quite a few years. I know she has a son who works for the city. So to her husband Jim, her entire family, all her friends, of which I'm one, our condolences. And COVID hasn't gone away. So, you know, be diligent, guys. The holidays are coming up. People are going to be together. We finally feel like we can get out a little bit. But just remember to be very cautious and continue to try and mask up. And if you don't feel good, you know, I know it would be hard to be home, but miss out one day because one day compared to what could happen is really small. And have a safe and happy holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Kaminsky. Ms. Elzayat?
Well, I don't have much of anything different to say. You know, I will reiterate condolences to the entire Oxford community. I do wish everybody a safe and happy holiday. I do want to bring up two things, though. If anything, that we learned from the Oxford situation last week, we learned how important the message at home is to the kids even more than the message at school, even more than the message of Instagram. And I always tell everybody this, your kids are watching you from the minute they are born. They watch everything you do. They know what you think is right. They know what you think is wrong. And even the things that you don't tell them, they can read. They can read their parents better than anybody, I would say. So I think that's a lesson that we learned from last week and how important it is to the parents and guardians at home to make sure that message to your kids is keeping not only your child safe, but every child safe. Another thing that I'd like to say is, I did want to thank Mr. Amar for coming and bringing up his concerns to the board today. I want to apologize because I was not aware, and I take responsibility for that myself, just as a board member, that I did not know that, and encourage you, and I don't know if you did, you probably did, but if you reach out to somebody at that time when you're made aware and make us aware as soon as possible rather than waiting for a meeting, which was a week later, maybe action could have been taken sooner or so. But I thank you and commend you for coming forward for that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, last but not least, I do want to reiterate, I apologize what the administration had to go through today with those threats coming into our district. I just want to make it very clear, and I know that the board agrees with us, that we have a zero tolerance. We will prosecute and we will expel. So we just want to put that out there that this is not a laughing matter. The stress that everybody went through today should not be tolerated. We want to make it very clear that if you're going to, if you see something, say something, number one. And secondly, it's not fair. Our kids need to be in school. They've missed so much. We need to stop adding the stress, you know, to their caseloads. With that being said, I get stressed saying that because I know, I can only imagine what you guys went through today because, like I said, my blood pressure was, oof. Anyway, and the other thing I want to say is Merry Christmas to everyone and have a safe and healthy and happy new year. With that being said, move to adjourn. So moved? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight twenty-six. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful night.
Thank you.